Good evening. I'm Sue Flycop, a member of the League of Women Voters of Wayland and tonight's moderator. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure everyone is represented in our democracy. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation at the local, state, and national levels. We're a membership organization open to all people who subscribe to its purpose and policies. "Women" in the name is a legacy that pays tribute to the veterans of women's suffrage movement who were our founders over 100 years ago and to the many females who inspire us all to make democracy work. This forum is part of our ongoing voter education efforts to help voters make informed decisions in the upcoming elections. We hope that you will learn more about the candidates and what they hope to do for Stoughton through tonight's program. Just a reminder, Stoughton's election will be held on Tuesday, April 2nd. And now, onto the candidates forum. I'll start by explaining some of the procedures for the forum which each candidate received beforehand. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, one minute to answer each question, and one minute for a closing statement. Opening statements will be done in alphabetical order and closing statements will be done in reverse alphabetical order. I will ask a set of questions compiled by the League with input from the public and every candidate will be asked the same questions. The moderator, me, the time clock and the candidates will be spotlighted on Zoom and always visible. The clock will change color with 15 seconds remaining. Please finish your sentence when you see the stop on the clock. If you continue speaking after the stop is visible, I will say thank you and move on to the next speaker. The questions will be listed in the chat section for those who are viewing. Personal references about other candidates or specific people are out of order. And for the audience, this forum is being recorded and broadcast live on Comcast 8, Verizon 24, and will be rebroadcast several times on SMAC. A recording will also be available on stoughtontv.com and l w v s s dot org. For the Zoom audience, please mute yourself and remain muted. If you prefer not to be seen, please turn off your video. Okay, so we'll get started with tonight. Stoughton has a five-member select board. In this election, there are two open seats and each seat has a three-year term. We have three candidates who are running for these two positions. The candidates are Scott Carrera, Stephen Kavy, and Lauren Morris. So, let's begin with opening statements, which will be two minutes each. Candidates were asked to use their time to discuss why they're running for office and the primary issues they feel that need to be faced. So we'll get started in alphabetical order and Scott, two minutes to you first.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to Steve Kavy and Lauren Morris and that we're all here. I was on the board from 2000 to 2009, the select board, and I got back on in '21. And now, we have to run again and just running for one of the open seats. I'd like to continue on because I listen, I hear, and my experience delivers to the residents exactly what they would like to see out of one of us selectmen to make sure that things are sent to them the way they should be, their services are put out there at a decent rate, and that the town is run proper. The town has $129 million budget. I've been in town meeting where I started since '88 till present and that sets the tone for you to sit in this seat and you learn to build strengths, you learn how budgets are put together. And it's a long, grueling thing to sit, put budgets together. And I sat nine years on the Finance Committee, many other boards, and I did a lot of volunteer work for the town. So I want to continue on to give my expertise and make sure the residents kept aware and have a fighter there for them. I was the one that saved the trash farm. I spoke up. I've had a lot of good ideas. Some people have moved it forward and now it's time to look at things and prioritize. That's what I've always said. Prioritization saves on waste. So that's why I'm here. Continue on and I thank the residents for all they've done for me to this point.
I muted myself, sorry. Thank you. Stephen, two minutes to you.
Thank you very much. Once again, I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this debate. Susan, thank you very much for coming to moderate for us. I appreciate your time. And also to Scott and Lauren. You're very, obviously, we need people to run for these seats. You've both stepped up numerous times in order to look out for your neighborhood and your community. And I really appreciate that. I'd also like to just thank everyone watching and for the people of the town who are engaged in politics and understand what's going on. Very quickly about myself, there's a couple of things I would like to just put out there. The time I've stood on the board, I've had a wonderful opportunity to work on many subcommittees. Looks like somebody's sharing their screen.
Yeah, that should not be happening.
I'm gonna stop for a moment.
Okay. So, you have a minute and 20 seconds left, Stephen.
Okay, I appreciate that. So in the time that I've spent on the committee, I've had a chance to be the liaison for the select board to the School Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Redevelopment Authority, which I've been on with Scott Carrera. I've also been on various internal committees, the Opportunity Committee, Water and Sewer Subcommittee, Town Manager Search Committee, SMAC Contract Negotiation Committee, the South School Building Committee. I also represent Norfolk County in the Massachusetts Select Board Association as well as MMA, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, Board of Directors, and the Local Government Advisory Commission to the Governor. My specialties, what I bring to the board is, from my experience in education, is financial analysis, automation, process optimization, and project management. I have a master's degree from Harvard. I went to the evening school and received a master's in management with a concentration in finance and controls. Bachelor's degrees in philosophy. I know it's a stop, I'm just gonna do another point.
Keep going, I'm timing you, so.
I appreciate it. More than anything else, though, I'm a parent, I'm a husband, I'm a neighbor. And what I care about is making sure that we have thoughtful management of our resources to squeeze out the best we can, the most we can for our community. And so I humbly ask for your vote, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. I apologize for the interruption. Lauren, two minutes to you.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and I want to thank everybody who's tuned in tonight. And I want to say good luck to Scott and good luck to Steve. My name is Lauren Morris. I am a homeowner, a mother of two, both who attended preschool, elementary school, middle school, and graduated from SHS. I have served as VP, Vice President for the Givens School PTA, and then President. I have been a nurse for 41 years. I am currently a new patient coordinator for all new Atrius patients. I am Vice Chair on the Council on Aging Board here in Stoughton and I am also on the Finance Committee where I have learned so much in a short period of time. The reason why I want to be on the board is because Stoughton deserves an outsider, which is me. Not an outsider from Stoughton, but an outsider to the board. Somebody new, new, fresh voice. Taxpayers need responsible decision-makers and accountability. Public safety and strong education are keys to a thriving community. It's very important to me. My solid promise is I will work tirelessly with all partners, stakeholders, and citizens to deliver the community we all, of all of us, to the community worthy of us all. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, our first question was about your credentials and qualifications, which a number of you have already touched on. So let's take this minute. You can continue with credentials and your qualifications if you want. You can also talk about why you are running for office and important issues you think need to be faced. So let's start with Stephen first. A minute to you. Continuing on.
Yeah, so I read my resume for the most part. I did my best to try to give people a foundation for understanding the background that I have that I think would be useful. And there's a variety of hard skills involved. There's having a degree in finance and management is helpful. But there's more to the work that we do than just being able to deal with the hard skills. But I hope people will see is that the time I've spent on boards and committees as well as the liaison to the School Committee and the Finance Committee, where there tends to be a much more naturally adversarial relationship between select board and those committees, almost by statute, there tends to be a lot of friction. That what I can bring, the reason why I am the liaison is because I'm able to facilitate compromise and help people reach consensus. And I've done that repeatedly and I hope that people see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren, an extra minute to you to continue on with your introduction.
I just want to say that fiscal responsibility is extremely important to me and I want the taxpayers to know that I will, the first thing that I will think of is what is best for the taxpayers. That's gonna be my first and foremost decision whenever I have any kind of a vote or voice regarding the taxpayers. Public safety is huge. I want to be involved in anything that has to do with public safety and ensure that this town is safe, including the officers and obviously the residents of this town. I'd like to see more community, things happen around the town, maybe have some community spaces. I think the kids of this town need more areas where they can grow and learn from each other. So pretty much that, but I would say mainly fiscal responsibility and public safety is why I want to be on the board.
Thank you. And Scott, a minute to you.
I wasn't gonna read everything, but I might as well do it now. Like Steve read his resume, so I'll read. I'm a graduate of Stoughton High, 1979. Our class was a lassage that Stoughton never saw. 557 kids. So I know what it is to work with a whole group of people. I was on CONCON for six years. There probably isn't anybody on the board that has as much time in on Stoughton boards as I do. I was on CONCON for six years. I was a Vice Chair. I was a zoning board alternate for five years and I finished a full term at the Finance Committee, nine years. Then I came back on here, but I was on the Cedar Swamp Advisory Board, Zoning Bylaw Review, Sewer Research Committee. And I've done a ton of volunteer work and it was lucky that my father and I both owned, he owned the business and I own it now. It's 62 years old and I'm still going. But we did the Stoughton Little League Fields. We did them. We did the Park Warner Field, the concession stand, the field, several cap playground things and North Schools. I did the Sarka Field Extension for the Park and Lo.
Thank you very much. Our next question, we're gonna go to Lauren first. And the question is, do you favor building a new elementary school to replace the South and Wilkins Schools?
So, this is a tough one because we definitely need a new South School. We've known about this since before the high school was built. And I'm just, I'm kind of upset that we're put in this position. I don't understand why we haven't saved money over the years, over the years, to be prepared for this or planned for this. And now we're stuck in a situation where it's going to affect the taxpayers in a major way. So that's a tough one for me and I would need to have more details about the whole project and everything to make a final decision.
Okay, thank you. And Scott, the question to you.
Could you repeat it, please?
Sure. Do you favor building a new elementary school to replace the South and Wilkins Schools?
I absolutely am in favor of the South School. It's one of the reasons I got back on the board, other than the fire station. I think the combined school, and I said it at town meeting before and I won't hide from it, that I don't think they need a combined school. I think they need a South School. And I've asked them to go to the next-door neighbors, the Brockton, where they've put up five brand-new schools in the last nine years and get one that fits there. Talk to the architects, see what the upgrades have to be, and build a school that fits and leave the people with their neighborhood schools. I don't think we need to do another middle school horror show and disrupt this whole town. I think, let's get a school, an affordable school, and figure out how to fund it and all get behind it. But I don't think we need this Mar-a-Lago in the woods that they're looking at. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Stephen, the question to you.
The question is brief, but I think it also misrepresents something, that we're not gonna be replacing the South and the Wilkins. It's that we would be taking those two schools offline, adding a new school, and then redistricting the entire town. So in fact, there would be all sorts of changing of districts. As far as taking the South School offline, that building is in atrocious shape. There is asbestos everywhere, even the ceiling tiles. Or to replace them rather than take them down, that they just screw more ceiling tiles on top of poles. It's not set up for, and was built well before, there's ADA requirements. It doesn't accommodate people with disabilities, children with disabilities. We absolutely need to replace that building. Of that, how we do it, people can be of different minds, but there is, in my mind, no question, this building has to be replaced.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with Scott first. Do you favor the plan for Hebrew senior life to build senior housing on Canton Street?
I'll tell you, I haven't been following that because I've been hearing, one way is one way. And everybody says it's for Stoughton seniors and as I've said through Mr. Kavy, there's a monkey in the back room that it's, it's Fair Housing Act rules everything. And I was told that seven months, people were gonna be able to apply from Stoughton and that's against the law. So I don't, I don't know how that's gonna work down there. I don't want to hold anybody back. They get the right to build something. They have the right to build it. But they have the right to build it under whatever the Stoughton terms are to build it. But I don't know what the deals are on trying to get, because I don't take in the meetings. I know there's other people that go to them, but right now there's some issues down there and the fair housing one is the monkey in the back of the room.
Okay, thank you. Stephen, the question to you.
I think this is by far the best project from an external developer I've seen. And it solves a lot of the problems the town has. We have a housing crisis. There's no uncertainty about that. If we were able to move seniors, the ones who were interested in downsizing into a facility like this, which is absolutely state-of-the-art, it would be, it would open up a lot of our housing stock and would bring in, it has the potential to bring in a lot of people who are perhaps younger, who have disposable income, who could revitalize or economically revitalize our town. We can rely on people with the money that they can spend and invest into the community to do so and not have to rely as heavily on seniors who are working to preserve their income, their fixed incomes. I think this is one of the best projects I've ever seen. I've been very lucky to be involved from the start of it and I would love very much to see this pass town meeting for this building to come up.
Thank you. And Lauren, the question to you.
Yes, I think we do need the senior housing. We have been assured that 70% of the residents will be Stoughton residents. Excuse me. I would like to see some kind of guarantee. That's my only fear, is they say this, but you never know. And I do have a concern with the staff of the fire department because if we have our Stoughton seniors that have homes move into the Hebrew senior life, which has a great reputation and, you know, I think they're a great organization, that means, which is a good thing, that we'll have people buying homes, more people buying homes. And then we really have to focus on the staff of the fire department to make sure they can handle the, you know, the extra load that it may cause. But I am definitely for the senior center.
Okay, thank you. Stephen, this next question is to you first. Voter turnout in 2023 was 5.2%. In 2022, it was 3.4%, and in 2021, it was 7.5%. In this election, there are no candidates for the School Committee or Redevelopment Authority. How would you address this apathy for voting and government participation?
Well, you know, I've been following these numbers very closely for going back about 10 years and I noticed that there are, we do have spikes in participation. They tend to be closely associated with major projects that have a profound impact on the entire town. So shortly after an election to, for a debt exclusion for our high school, the following election was the highest turnout we'd seen in years. And every year after that, it diminished by roughly 10% until we reached the number that we're at right now. The fact is that people who are interested and who are seeing issues that they're engaged in, they show up and they show up again and again if you keep on engaging them. But as far as getting people engaged and interested in the local government, we are competing against national politics for that audience. I think that the outreach that's necessary from our community, from our government, to individuals who can really show that the issues that impact the most are local issues.
Thank you. Scott, the question to you.
This is a, we hear it all the time and I think the problem is it's the family structure at home. Everybody's so busy. Everybody has phones. You go out to eat and you see a family eating. They'll have three children. They'll all be on their phones. The parents are on their phones. When I was younger, we sat at the table, we discussed, you learned. And to vote was a big privilege. You couldn't wait to vote. I thought it was the greatest thing in the world. You get the vote. It felt like you did something. But I'm not so sure, even with my children, my two boys, I don't think they're avid voters at all. And it's just, it's a different world and it's hard to strike people into doing it sometimes. Some kids get involved in your campaign and it turns them over and they really like it. So it starts at home and.
Okay, thank you. And Lauren, one minute to you.
So I think communication is the key. And a lot of people don't want to get involved because of the fear of getting involved, you know, in the local government and everything. I have actually been reaching out and with everybody that I know about getting involved and encouraging them and telling them how I was fearful when I first started. But as you go on, it just gets easier and easier and it's a feel-good experience because you feel like you're doing something for your family and your children and then potentially your grandchildren. And people just have to get involved. And if you don't want to get involved in the departments in the town or the committees or the boards, that's fine. But vote, so your voice will be heard and that we can just move Stoughton forward and up.
Thank you. All right. For our next question, we're gonna go with Scott first. With the discontinuation of the Stoughton Journal and minimal coverage by the Brockton Enterprise and the Patriot Ledger, the only source of news and information is social media. What can be done to get accurate information to the public?
Well, the websites are coming along at Town Hall and Trish Sharpshire has been given a wide berth on helping the department heads bring their stuff up to a level that people can get on and see what's going on. I think we gotta do more with SMAC, involve them a lot more, bring a lot more to them, excited a little more. The newspapers, it's sad because I'm a newspaper guy and I'm a paper guy. Steve knows that. Paper is my thing. It's nice to pick up a newspaper. I buy the Enterprise all the time. Came to our house, now I pick it up. But I'll pick it up three times a night. I'll pick it up the next night, even though I have another one. But I, it's, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I don't think everything belongs on the social media. There's a lot of back and forth on that. I just, I think SMAC is gonna be the big gavin.
Thank you. Lauren, to you.
So, first of all, I think good old-fashioned phone calls are a good thing, especially for the seniors who don't have Facebook or other social media. And texting, sending out texts for meetings, specific meetings that are going on. And also, where I'm on the board of the Council on Aging, I was talking to Carolyn about potentially putting in flyers of all the upcoming select board meetings, Finance Committee meetings, and things like that. Excuse me. That newsletter that she puts out is excellent, but it's got so much information. So I think that's gonna take a little bit more conversation to see if that can be done. But yeah, there's ways we can do it. We just have to be focused.
Thank you. And Stephen, the question to you.
This is one of the significant issues that I think the town faces, all towns face. Communication is very difficult. We used to have, the benefits of having only two or three places to get the news from meant that you could have a laser focus. Now we have so many ways of getting information. It's so diffused across them that it's, you don't really know where to look, where to go, and what to do to get the information that you need. And it's, I know the people in the town work hard to get the message out and the fact that we're still hearing that people are missing the message means that, you know, we have not conquered this yet. I imagine that's pretty universal. I think that what we need is really to, more than we have before, bear down and solve this problem. I think it would help to have somebody in Town Hall whose job it was to facilitate communications. I personally believe that the library is probably the place where this should come from. They already manage information extremely well. And so that's my views. I think that we need to focus.
Okay, thank you. Lauren, this next question is to you first. Stoughton is marred by blight with a hole in the center of town, the State Theater, and various eyesores throughout the town. What remedies do you propose to improve this situation? Do you favor the taking of these properties by eminent domain?
I think the best way to go about this would be private companies coming in, buying the land and developing it on their own. There's so much going on with that and so much in the background. I know Mark Tisdale's been working with the developer. Can I have a second? I have to.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry about that. I think the last resort for me would be eminent domain. But I think we really need to, I mean, the taxes that we pay, we should not have any of those abandoned buildings. We should have more going on in this town and we have to find a way to have private businesses come here. And I think that's the start, the start of finishing and making our town pretty again.
Thank you. And Stephen, the question to you next.
Sure. So our downtown, I mean, I mean, actually, it's a very different place. We are discussing to a large degree private properties. These are areas that, plots of land that are owned by private individuals. So there are things, there are sort of sticks and carrots the town can use to push some vision of what we want. There are limitations on that unless we go nuclear essentially and take it by eminent domain and force it. So to the extent that we're able to provide the sticks and the carrots and find ways of incentivizing people to move towards what we're looking for, I think that's would be the first approach and has been the first approach that I take. But if we find ourselves in a place where there's simply no hope that a landowner is going to. That a landowner is going to, to, um. Do what's really in the public a good with their land, that they'll have an empty storefront or a vacant lot. Uh, then, then taking by eminent domain, I, I support. I think that we have many instances. Where the town would be better off taking an empty lot or a dilapidated building. And, uh, and then facilitating a transfer to a private, uh, organization that could then build, that, that'd have to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Prejudice laws, but.
Thank you. Uh, Scott, the question's to you next.
I'm not in favor of taking anything by eminent domain. We have enough problems trying to put out a cell school without being in the real estate business. The town took the, uh. I call it the granite elephant, which is the, um. The train station, then they bought the white elephant, which is Randolph Savings Bank. Um, Randolph Savings Bank belongs being the parking garage for the downtown. So that people that own their businesses will have a place to park, not in front of their businesses, so nobody can stop. We have to look at some of the traffic patterns in that place. To keep traffic moving instead of these left-hand turns across the center. Everything should be going right, in and out, but the parking garage is the only thing that's gonna save it. And people need someplace to go to, to get to. But I'm not gonna be in the real estate business. We have more important things to give the residents than worry about who we're gonna patent.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with Steven first. Some towns such as Brookline, Milton, Needham, Norwood and Plymouth. Only require fifty signatures for the townwide office and ten for new town meeting representatives. In these communities, incumbent town meeting members only need to file a written acceptance to be placed on the ballot. Do you favor Stoughton adopting these requirements?
Uh, that's a good, it's a very good question. It's a thoughtful question, um, and my own view is, is I don't think that. Having run in several elections now, uh, I do not feel that, that the requirements that we have to meet as candidates are, um. Honors, that, that it's not too much, uh, to gather essentially a hundred signatures, um, and, uh. The process is, process itself of gathering signatures as a candidate is a very healthy one. You should be knocking on doors, talking to people. Giving them an idea of what you're, what you want to do, assembling coalitions and finding people who, you know, who are willing to help you with your elections. Uh, make, uh, limiting the barrier or reducing the barriers to entry, uh, might incentivize some people to sign up. Uh, but honestly, what, what is required of the candidates, it's not, uh, masking too much at all. And I think it's a, it's a bare minimum level of effort. If you're not willing to put in that level of effort, I'm not sure, uh, that, that you really belong on the board or committee in the town of Stoughton.
Okay, thank you. Lauren, the question's to you next.
Um, I don't feel that this is a, I, I, I'm perfectly happy with the amount of, um, signatures we need in our town. I don't think it's an issue.
Okay, thank you. And Scott? Uh, I'm assuming that was your complete answer, Lauren. Okay. Scott, a minute to you.
Um, I'm not in favor of woeing anything to make it easier. We already went from. Um, town meeting reps from a thirty-five sheet down to fifteen. And some people can't even get those. They come in and they want to get carcass then because they didn't go out and get their fifteen. You gotta look at the town budget. It's a hundred and twenty-nine billion dollar budget. And you, and people wanted to make it easy. You need qualified individuals. That is gonna go get the signatures that wanna be in that, that, that spectrum and I think a hundred isn't that much. So I, I'd leave things alone. Sometimes when you change things, you don't make them for the better.
Okay, thank you. And Lauren, you're gonna be first on this next question. Do you think Stoughton's form of government with representative town meeting works in its current state? And do you recommend any changes?
I like the, the, um, our government, our town government as it is. I think it's great to have five people making decisions and representing the town. And, um, having the town meeting ultimately have the final decisions in many things. I don't favor like having a mayor or any of that one person making decisions, so. Um, I would like to see our town government stay as is.
Thank you. Scott, a minute to you.
I'm an, I'm a sworn advocate for what the charter states for our, uh, form of government. Um, for a hundred and sixty-eight people that go there and, and, and speak. Because I started in eighty-eight. And what you learn when you go through town meeting, if you stick with it or if you don't, or if you go in and out. You build your strengths by questioning. And when I started, the budget was thirty-eight million dollars. It is now a hundred twenty-nine million. You gotta learn town meeting. It's a great thing and it works. If you go, um, city. Will have eight, eight counselors, one, one at large. And no finance committee because they draw a finance committee within themselves. So it, it takes the people right out of everything. So I'm for our government. I have always been.
Thank you. And Steven, the question to you.
Sure. I've been thinking a lot about this for, for many, many years and, uh, I, I honestly, I oscillate back and forth. Uh, what you trade, uh, in my view is, um, security. And versus speed, right? So something like town meeting, uh, it's a very slow process, very, very slow. Uh, to get anything done takes a long time and a lot of work, uh, but it's very secure. Uh, by the time you get to the final answer. You know how, how the people in Stoughton feel. Um, with, with a smaller, more nimble, uh, former government, you can certainly move faster. But there, uh, are in fact. You know, many ways to cheat that system that, that don't currently exist. Things do not get the scrutiny that they get for us. And so you have to ask yourself, are you willing to sacrifice the security for the speed? And when you're going through COVID, you, you probably could have changed my mind, uh, but I saw. Even with, with, uh, with everything at a standstill, we were still able to accomplish the most important things that we were doing. And so I'm not sure that we need, need to change, uh, but I know there's very wise people on both sides of that issue and I, I, I'm willing to, uh, to continue thinking about it.
Okay, thank you. Scott, this next question is to you first. Do you think Stoughton's form of government, oh, sorry. How can this, sorry, I, I've been, uh, highlighting them and I missed that one. How can the select board rectify the failure to raise rates for employee health insurance? Water, sewer and trash despite reports indicating the necessity? Considering the resultant delay in maintenance, what strategies would you propose? To address this issue and ensure the financial sustainability of essential services?
That's a heck of a question. But I can assure you that, I can assure you that, um. Raising the rates on the health. Comes from a person who's supposed to be the expert. They're supposed to alert us to it, but I can tell you that we had, uh, um. A part of money that was with the insurance and it was misused. I was on the finance committee when we brought it to attention. And we were basically ignored. So that's why those, that happened. Um, a trash fee, um, started way back when, when. Um, some money was inadvertently given out and it shortfall, so we had to go with a fee. But I think most people are not worried about the fees. But the water and sewer rights, sewer rates, we might have to sit in and look at. Now that we fixed it, a continuous small increase. Each year to keep it fluid because right now everything goes up.
Okay, thank you. And Steven, the question to you next.
Yeah, so I, 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 yeah, I answered this by, by first saying that, that I, I, uh, don't hold anybody, uh, any former boards. Uh, accountable for this. I think everyone was dealing with a lot of problems. When I started, uh, though, uh, we were in a, in, in rough shape. Huge deficits, uh, and they were, they were getting worse, uh, and so I just got, uh, was on the, the finance committee. And he saw that all of these things firsthand and had to wrestle with the same issues that I was. Uh, that, that we were trying to find, we did not have enough money to do the things we felt that we needed to do. Uh, in the, in the past six years, through economic development, through increase in new growth, uh, and through better financial management. Uh, we have moved to a place where we are in entirely different situation. And even though we knew all these problems existed and they needed to be dealt with, we did not have the money to do it. But we do now. We're able to fix them now. We're able to address them and going forward, uh, we are looking at healthier and healthier. If we just keep the course going, very, very healthy budgets, uh, very, very healthy revenues. And, uh, and because of the decisions that, that the select boards that I was on made, that made this possible.
Thank you. And Lauren, the question to you.
Yeah, so I think we got in the position we were in, um, like everyone was saying, the, um. Previous, they, they weren't aware of the amount of, um. They didn't go up on the health insurance as they should have. And they didn't go up on the trash and water as they should have, and then it became a huge issue. So to solve that problem for the future. You're gonna, no matter what, you're gonna have to just keep going up, you know, at a certain amount instead of having to deal with it. At a thirty percent increase or something. So you're just gonna have to go up as needed instead of. You know, finding yourself in a huge, um, mess, um, at some point, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Steven, this question is to you next. Last October, changes were made to trash collection. Do you think this policy should be tweaked?
Uh, well, yeah, I think, I think it's simply as a matter of its creation. It was, it was so fundamentally or different from what we've done in the past. That, uh, uh, built into the, the very, uh, creation of it was a, you know, a sense that we would have to reexamine. We have to look back. See what, see what worked, what didn't work and, and make tweaks. So, uh, so absolutely, I think there's, there's, there's things we're gonna have to continue to address. Uh, and you know, even, even the, the, uh. To the extent that there were, you know, rates created for certain types of pickups, mattresses and, and so forth, that, that, um. People were, people who were creating those rates were using their, their, some best estimates. We run these, these accounts, uh, water, sewer, trash, uh, break, at break even. Like, there is no intention to make a profit. Off of, of, uh, uh, the removal of, of waste or bringing in water or anything like that. So we have to see, did we, did we get close to break even? Did we go way over, way under? And, uh, and we'll have to adjust our policies depending on what we see.
Thank you. And Scott, the question to you next.
Well, I was, I was the one that. Listened to the residents who were up in arms because they thought their trash was gonna be taken from them and raised in a different way. We're good till twenty thirty before the board has to, uh, renegotiate with CMAS. So our rates are locked in. It's how we pick it up. The people wanted to stay with the, uh, their own bags and stuff like that. I don't think anybody has a problem paying for a mattress, a refrigerator or whatever. Because you don't throw them out every week. The only ones who throw them out are the people who have three families and they live out of town. And they bring their stuff from out of town and dump it in our town. So we have fixed a lot of that. Do we have to tweak it? Uh, I don't know. It'll, it'll talk to us when we see what we took in for revenues and stuff like that. But right now it's solid. The people willfully raise their own, um, trash rate to a minimal thing. To, uh, afford and still have the great pickup.
Thank you. And Lauren, the question to you.
So, um, our rates went up. We, we made the changes we were supposed to make. We don't get the same service that we used to have. So I think it definitely needs to be tweaked. And I'm wondering if there could be like a day every month or something that we could. Uh, have a pickup of those things like the mattresses and all that, like at once and maybe for free. Um, I don't know that we definitely need to rethink, uh. The trash pickup. I mean, the, the people who get our trash and take care of it are amazing, um. But there still should be some changes made with the trash.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Scott, you're first with this next question. Last year, the select board recommended the town purchase the dilapidated and uninhabited house on a small lot beside town. Beside town hall for parking, signing a PNS agreement at a higher amount than the property was appraised for. Do you think this was an appropriate recommendation by the select board? Why or why not?
I, I don't think it was appropriate at the time. It was put forward, I, I would think inappropriately. If we wanted the, the piece of property for a parking lot, that's what we should have put forth to the, uh, the people. But we had to go about it and around about Robin Way. And then people got, you know, oh, we're not getting the best bang for our buck and. You know, any, any person who owns a piece of property that's as sensitive as that, that it's close to something that the town needs, they're gonna set their own number on it. Um, you can't ask somebody to take less for something. Unless they're very well-heeled and they can do that, but they have every right to, to do it, but. I don't think the numbers are right. Maybe it'll come back and look right and the town might look at it in a different way. They always do. That's what's the good thing about town meeting. You got enough minds there who can look at it.
Thank you. And Lauren, the question to you.
So the amount that was asked for that house, um, was not appropriate for the. It's dilapidated, you know, people were going in it. Homeless people that were going in it. It's, it's, there's an oil tank, I believe, in the cellar that we don't even know if there's oil in there. Um, if the price came down, I would, I, I would think it would be a good idea, but for the price they're asking, no way.
Okay, thank you. And Steven, the question to you.
So I, I serve in a slightly different place to just say that, that ultimately, you know, I, I have a, uh. After going through numerous town meetings and bring, bringing ideas forward and having them voted by town meeting, I, I. Have grown to really appreciate the wisdom of town meeting and the people who vote there, uh, even when I, you know, there's something I supported and it loses. I, I can usually, um. Clearly understand the objections, clearly understand why it, it wasn't right for the town. So I, I do have a lot of faith in that. I think this. Project probably was correctly voted against the town meeting and I, I think that was the right choice. As far as it being, um. You know, inappropriate recommendation, I, I don't think that's accurate. I think, uh, we do the best we can with the information we have. Uh, there's a lot of projects that we're trying to, to develop and a lot of, um, you know, because of the, the. Um, speed with which town meeting moves very slow. Sometimes you have to make decisions, uh, either quickly or very slowly over long periods of time. I, I think this one, um, uh, wasn't a good choice. Uh, it was, it was, uh, town meeting appropriately, uh, dismissed it, voted against it. Uh, but I don't think it was an inappropriate recommendation by this life board.
Okay, thank you. Our next question, Lauren, you will be first. Given that cannabis stores are at our borders in Avon and Brockton, should we allow them in Stoughton and gain the tax revenue?
So I think it definitely deserves a conversation, uh, the pros and the cons. I think we need to talk to other towns and see how it's worked for them, um, but it, it has brought in a lot of money for towns and. Some people say, oh, there's gonna be all kinds of trouble and all that, but I have not heard about any issues with other towns, so. I, I wouldn't say yes or no until we had conversations with different people. All different points of views and then make a decision, but I wouldn't be against it.
Thank you. And Steve, Steven, the question to you next.
Yeah, it's a good question. Uh, when, when town meeting has addressed this one early on, when, when it first became a possibility. Ultimately voted against having, having, uh, uh, these kinds of stores in our town. At the time, I, I voted to have them, I was town meeting representative and still am, I voted, uh, in favor of, of, of the change and allowing these things. Um, and this might be one of the votes where, you know, I, I did disagree and I think town meeting did make the wrong choice, uh, but I think they had the. They had, they were working with the best information. They, they had time and I, I still have faith that it was right at the time. But now we've seen many communities open up these stores and, and the, the, you know, apocalypse that was described, uh, didn't materialize. Uh, you know, I, I, I see that there's, you know, there, there's nothing sort of fundamentally different from this that, than, uh, that we see with other. Uh, places that sell other vices, you know, liquor or cigarettes or whatever. I, I just don't think that the crime wave, uh, we're gonna see that. I think that the benefits of the tax revenue would be tremendous and, and worth it for us.
Thank you. And Scott, the question to you.
We didn't, we didn't ban them from the town. We, we just zoned them into one area. So they, they can come in and Campinelli Parkway, unfortunately, the one that we just delivered a large sewer project to. Is the area where it can go. Um, am I in favor of these? I'm a CDL truck driver. Is the most, it's, it's a federal crime. to have any of that in your system, driving a truck. So I have to say, not a big fan of it. If you have towns on either side here that, that it's, it's advantageous to get, you can drive down Pearl Street in Brockton and you can pass five of them. And there's a, a one place I know that has a lawyer office and they're about ready to move because of the, the, there's such a, uh, an odor. And it, and it's bothering them. So, you know, we can zone for them to be in a certain spot. We're not saying no.
Thank you. And the next question, Stephen, uh, you will start. How should we address PFAS contamination in our drinking water supply? Should Stoughton build a water treatment plant or buy water from the MWRA? Or do you have any other ideas?
Okay, so this, this is good. We, we're, we're working on this currently, that we are, we are in fact mitigating, uh, working to build a plan that will mitigate PFAS from our, from our water. I don't have a lot of time, so I really wanna say that town is addressing the town water supply issue with this right now. However, people do have to remember that there's people who are wells and you have to on your own, look into your own, your own water and make sure that you're safe. I really wanna get that out there. When, when people talk, talk about water, the municipal water, we are, we are getting that treated. We, we will be fine. People on wells, please look into, into your, your status with this. Get your water tested. You, uh, because the, the things the town's doing to protect the town water supply won't affect you. You're gonna need to address this yourself. Uh, and there are also, uh, we're, we're involved in, in litigation, a class action suit against companies that, uh, that created the PFAS now in our system. Uh, for people who are on wells, uh, that is also something you should look into getting involved with class action suit for the PFAS that is in your water that you're gonna have to mitigate.
Thank you. And Lauren, the question to you.
Could you just repeat that for me?
Sure. How should we address PFAS contamination in our drinking water supply? Should Stoughton build a water treatment plant or buy water from the MWRA? Or do you have any other ideas?
Um, I think if we could, um, I think building a water, um, treatment plant here would be a great idea. I don't know too much about what's going on with the PFAS, but, um, just from a point of view, I would say if we could have it here in our own town, that would be great. Um, but we know, getting, I don't really have all the information on it, so, um, I would say Steve obviously knows him, Scott, I would, um, you know, maybe talk to them about what the situation is with the town and the, the water. Um, but I'm thinking if we had our own, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. And Scott, the question to you.
Yes, we're, we're under, uh, DEP certs and federal, um, water, um, the, um, deli, direction to us. We have, um, two stations right now that are being outfitted. And Pratt's Court is a water, um, a water clearing, um, well already. So we have the brand new one that we just put in that muddy pond, which is station one. That is being treated and then we have to look at the rest. MWRA being where they're, uh, a person who, um, sends water to us, they have to straighten out their own PFAS problem. So inadvertently, we'll be paying for it anyhow through our taxes, but, um, the town's working on it. We've, I think we got five million dollars out already in bonds to start one. So we're gonna do it as we can and as, as we can afford. And it's, it's something that just, it just jumped up and it just came on us like, like a wall.
Okay, thank you. We have one more question on my list before we get to closing statements. I'm gonna try and squeeze it in if that's okay. Um, this would be first to you, Lauren. What do you propose should be done with New England Sinai Hospital property after it closes?
It's, I, and also the adult daycare across the street from it closed. I think that needs to be an adult daycare again. Um, we, there was twenty, twenty-eight residents in the adult daycare and fourteen of the residents were from Stoughton. So we definitely have a need for the adult daycare. I just wanted to put that in there. And New England Sinai, I think it should be another medical facility, um, there. Maybe an urgent care, um, but something that will definitely benefit the residents of the town, um. I don't know the land and how much there is, uh, to build any kind of living situation, but I personally think it should be some kind of medical facility, keep it as is, especially where there's already medical stuff in that building.
Okay, thank you. And Scott, the question to you next.
I've been, um, pondering this for, for a few weeks, thinking about it when it's gonna close. Um, I'm afraid that it's gonna become a migrant center, like it's gonna be Ellis Island and the town of Stoughton is gonna be stuck with some more stuff that we can't afford. But I don't think it wouldn't be a bad idea that if it became a, um, a senior center, and I don't mean that they have to live in the rooms the way they are, but it could be built out because the bones are there. It's on eighteen acres. It backs up right up to, um, the Canton elderly centers that are out back there and, and, and the affordable housing that they got. So they'd have neighbors. If, if it was done right, it could be a nice place on that street. And it, and it would be good for people who are looking for affordable, like, housing that way. And, um, it's pretty well set up. It's got a great rotunda room and everything, the meeting room. I mean, it's, it wouldn't take much to rehab it into housing.
Thank you. And Stephen, the question to you.
I, I, I appreciate it. I, I, I mean, there's, this, disrespecting this, but, uh, it's private property. It's a private business. I, my hope is that it continues on as one, uh, what exactly it, it does and, and who, who, who services. Um, you know, it only fills any of my business as a select board member. I wanna make sure that, that, that it's, doesn't become, um, uh, abandoned. Uh, you know, I wanna see something in there. Uh, whatever that is, I, I hope the free markets are able to come up with a good solution for how to turn hospital into something useful and profitable. Uh, but I don't have strong feelings about what exactly that would be. But I, I think the, the general, my, my general feeling is, uh, that it has to be something. We, we can't end up with another empty abandoned building, uh, that, that the town loses tax revenue on, uh, and is somehow now our responsibility to care for. Uh, and so if, if there's any whiff of that not happening, uh, then, then I'll, I'll certainly become a, a lot more opinionated about what happens after that. But for right now, I, I'm hoping that uh, if somebody finds a reason to profit from it and they go buy it and they turn it into something useful.
Thank you. And we are, we can all take a deep breath. You've done with the questions. It's just time for our closing statements and we'll do those in reverse order of the way we started. So, um, Lauren, that is you first. One minute.
Thank you. All right. So, um, I'm asking the citizens of Stoughton to help me win in the upcoming April twenty twenty-four election, April second, twenty twenty-four. I'm very excited about my chances to secure a seat and I'm confident when I do, the people of my community will find that we have a lot more in common than the current elected officials. Some may ask why, and that's because I'm an outsider. Outsider from the select board, new fresh voice, new ideas. I have no personal agenda and I, I owe no interest groups. And quite frankly, I have no alignments with any builder group or organization that believes that I owe them something. I'm free to carefully and prudently evaluate all spending issues that may come before us. Uh, I have the advantage of learning about each issue as it presents itself. I have no hidden agenda when hearing each issue. Remember, I am not in the know. I am an outsider. Please vote on April second.
Thank you. And Stephen, a minute to you.
Sure. So, uh, uh, you surely don't have to be an outsider to not be in the pocket of somebody. I, I, I owe no allegiances other than to the, uh, the voters and the taxpayers of the town. Uh, and I've often told people I'm not a particularly good politician. Uh, hopefully they're, they're okay with that. They have been in the past. Uh, what I am, is one of your neighbors. Uh, I've been lucky enough to have, uh, some, some experiences and some education that I think are valued to the town. And I hope that people, uh, agree with that, continue to see that I'm adding value and that I'm providing, uh, for our collective best interest uh, in the town. Uh, and I've had an absolute blast, uh, working with, with the select board, being on the select board, working with town, people in the town, people in town government. Uh, it's been, it's a wonderful ride. Uh, the experiences that I gained, uh, have, have, I think, prepared me to help make, uh, better decisions going forward and continue to make the right choices for the town. And I just ask respectfully, please may I have one of your votes? Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Scott, one minute to you.
I appreciate the questions tonight and, um, I wanna thank the League of Women Voters. I wanna thank you, Sue. And thank you very much. It was, uh, it's very calming, huh. I, I gotta say. What I'd like to say to the voters, uh, and the residents, everybody, I come here with them in mind. My decisions are always made for the residents, not myself. I own a business in town. We have what they call the, uh, we, we transfer some of the, the burden over onto the, the, the businessman. That's myself. Because it's up to me to make twenty-eight thousand people happy, maybe not five hundred. But I'd appreciate your vote to continue on serving the town the best way I know how. And I don't consider myself an insider, an outsider, or whatever. I'm just somebody here to offer the best I can for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to close this forum by thanking all the candidates for their participation in our democratic process. No official candidates are running for school committee and town meeting representatives in some precincts. So please visit, this is to our viewers, please visit the Stoughton Town Clerk's website for information on being a writing candidate. Thank you to all who submitted questions. And thanks to Robyn Zoll and the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. Thanks to Joanne for putting up her questions. And especially a thank you to SMAC for their participation tonight. Please remember to vote in Stoughton's town election on Tuesday, April second. The polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. Thank you and good night.